Okay, seven o'clock. I'd like to call the council meeting to order. If everyone could please rise to salute the flag.
I'd like to lead the flag of the United States of America and the true republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Everyone, first I have to make the ritual announcement in accordance with Massachusetts General Laws, Chapter 38, Section 20. Please note that tonight's meeting is being both audio and video recorded. If anyone else present is recording the meeting, please identify yourself for the audience. Anyone? Okay, great. Katie, if you could take a roll call?
Absolutely. Counselor Leflam.
Present.
Counselor Griffin.
Here.
Counselor O'Brien.
Here.
Counselor Eager.
Here.
Counselor Clune.
Here.
Counselor Smith.
Here.
Counselor Powers.
Present.
Counselor DiStefano.
Here.
And President Sullivan.
Here, thank you. Approval of the agenda been sent out to everyone. Anyone want to make any changes? If not, I'll move to approve the agenda as presented.
Second.
Moved in seconded. Any discussion for the discussion? Okay, we'll take another vote. Counselor DiStefano?
Yes.
Counselor Powers?
Yes.
Counselor Smith?
Yes.
Counselor Clune?
Yes.
Counselor Eager?
Counselor O'Brien?
Yes.
Counselor Griffin?
Yes.
Counselor Leflam?
Yes.
Counselor Sullivan votes yes. Okay, thank you. We have a couple of public hearings in front of us this evening. Counselor Griffin, you want to move the first one?
I'm not used to this.
Put you on the spot.
No, no, that's fine.
I can do it.
Move to open the public hearing to consider the utility position submitted by EverSource for the maintenance replacement and the vicinity of Johnson Street.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Okay. Public hearing's open. Anyone from EverSource here to give us a little presentation?
My name is Ryan Mayhew, representing EverSource Gas. This is for the main replacement on Johnson Street and Wilder Terrace. The purpose of this project is to replace the existing six-inch cast iron low-pressure gas main that runs along the entire length of Wilder Terrace and Johnson Street. Approximately 2,349 feet of new two-inch diameter plastic intermediate pressure gas main will be installed on the entire length of Wilder Terrace Terrace from Westfield to Ashley Street, along with the entire length of Johnson Street from Nelson to Van Horn Street. The gas source for the proposed main shall come from the existing six-inch steel main on Westfield Street and the existing two-inch plastic main on Nelson Street. Upon completion of the installation, testing, commissioning of the new gas main facilities, the existing cast iron mains shall be abandoned in place or moved to the extent necessary to ensure potential interferences are eliminated. The abandoned facilities shall be disconnected from gas sources, purged with air and properly sealed. All excavation trenches and tie-in holes will be properly backfilled, patched, to provide restoration to the affected areas. And the driving factor for this project is to replace and retire the old cast iron main, along with upgrading the existing services to the newer intermediate pressure system, before the planned municipal paving project on Johnson Street occurs in spring of 2022.
Okay, thank you. Any questions or comments from the public? No one? Okay. Oh, wait a minute. Come on up.
Good evening. Robyn Parent from 179 Harwich. So I had a question about the impact on the homes in the area and how long they might be without natural gas service during the time. And I don't know if the gentleman said what the timeframe was for the project, but I couldn't quite catch it.
Okay, could you come back up, maybe speak up a little and answer those two questions?
The project is planned to begin tomorrow, pending approval of utility. Timeframe construction would begin probably, I don't have a definite timeframe, but it would take probably a few weeks at minimum. There would be no loss of gas to any of the homes in the area until the actual tie-in process would happen over. That process would probably take a day or two at the end of construction. Therefore, everything would be tied over and gas services would resume.
Are you answering her question, saying that they would be without gas for a day?
A day at most. They would tie in the new gas mains within a day. It would probably happen more closer to early spring, just because construction would take a while to dig and install the new mains.
Counselor Griffin?
I'll be able to answer that later.
Okay.
With regards to discussions on that, via the utility commission, utility committee, I can't answer it now because it's public hearings. Unless the public hearing is over, I haven't been told. I'll be able to get you specifics on that. But, right, because it's tied in so strong.
Okay, anyone else? Okay, seeing none, entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
Close the public hearing?
Seconded. Moved in seconded. Discussion on the motion. Okay, seeing none, we'll go to a vote. Counselor Leflam?
Yes.
Counselor Griffin?
Yes.
Counselor O'Brien?
Yes.
Counselor Eager?
Yes.
Counselor Clune?
Yes.
Counselor Smith?
Yes.
Counselor Powers?
Yes.
Counselor DiStefano?
Yes.
President Sullivan, yes. Public hearing's closed. Thank you. All right, we have another public hearing in front of us this evening. Counselor Powers, you want to open that up or?
I move to open the public hearing to consider the proposed amendment to the town zoning ordinance submitted by 10 registered voters relative to amending the zoning map to reclassify certain parcels on Whitney Avenue from Residence A2 to Residence C.
Second.
Moved in seconded. Thank you. Oh, he's already at the microphone.
Good evening, Mr. President and members of the council. For the record, my name is Rich Sipek, and I represent Pyramid Company of Hoyok Inc. with regard to the requested zone change for the 17.66 acre parcel of land on the northeast corner of Whitney Ave., known as 711 Whitney Ave. in the abutting street as Highland Ave. The request is to change the zone from Residence A2 to Residence C. With me here this evening is Bill Rogowski from Pyramid Corp. He will speak briefly after me, just to highlight some of the benefits of the project. Also with me is Wayne Zuckerman from Sterling Properties. He's the proposed developer for this project. By way of background, I think everyone in the room is familiar with this 17-acre parcel of land. If you travel the back road of Route 5, you go up Highland Ave. toward the Hoyok Mall, you turn onto Whitney Ave. towards the back entrance to the Hoyok Mall. This parcel of land abuts the Hoyok Line. To the south side of the parcel is Highland Ave. itself. It's a dead-end street. There are about eight to 10 houses that abut one side of the parcel of this parcel in question. On the west side of the project, you have Interstate 91. On the north side, you have the Hoyok Line. And right next to this parcel is Valley View Apartments. It's a very large apartment complex. And next to the apartment complex is the Hoyok Mall. On the east side, which is across the street, you have Mary's Meadow and the Providence Place, which is multiple residential and nursing home facilities. So this site is kind of unique in its location. It's basically a 17, almost 18-acre undeveloped piece of land, which for purposes of discussion tonight, I'll call it scrub land. This land has been used for fill for the Hoyok Mall over the years. And the proposed zone change is to create something that West Springfield does not have. Pyramid Company is in agreement with an outside developer, Sterling, to construct some really new professional-style apartments to the north side of West Springfield. The parcel has access to 91 via Riverdale Road and the Hoyok Mall entrance, and it also has access to 91 from Route 5, as you know. The intent is to hopefully attract young professionals from all over West Springfield. We've met with the mayor, and he has fully endorsed this project 100%. We met on December 15th with the planning board, and they gave us a unanimous 4-0 vote to support the project. The project itself is a, brings a very positive impact to the town. It significantly improves a vacant site. I'm dating myself when I say this, but about 27 years ago, I represented Pyramid when they attempted to do a zone change to expand the Hoyok Mall. That was in the day when malls were on the up and up. And the intent back then was to build parking garages on this site, because it's kind of a scrub parcel, as I said earlier, in that town meeting we lost by a vote or two. And since then, the parcel's been vacant. Nothing's happened on this parcel for 27 years. It's just been just a vacant scrub parcel. The idea is to bring upscale housing to the side of town that does not exist, which I think is a significant impact on the town and an improvement. It'll also bring increased tax revenues, as you can imagine. The preliminary plans, which are very preliminary, was for four buildings with 19 units and 10 buildings with nine units. But as I said, we're not here to talk about what the project would look like. We're only here to get the zone change. And that's the only thing in front of you this evening. There's some geotechnical testing that's still going on to see how much we can develop of the parcel. There's some topography issues that have to be addressed as well. So at this time, I'm just going to turn the floor over to Bill Rogowski from Pyramid. He has a few comments he wants to make, and there are some illustrations that Mr. Zuckerman would like to offer to the council, and I'll be happy to answer any questions. Thank you.
Good evening. Thank you, Mr. President. Yeah, I'm just going to expound a little bit on Rich. Let me introduce myself. William Rogowski, 71 Apricot Hill Lane, West Springfield. Kind of here in a dual role. I'm not employed by Pyramid anymore, but I am doing some consulting work for them. I'm also here appearing as a resident who believes this is a very favorable project for the town. And I think one of the things that Rich hit on is this is not something that exists in the town of West Springfield today. And it really does not exist in western Massachusetts. It's going to be, again, high-end rentals, one and two-bedroom. So it's really targeting, you know, young professionals. But I would also say it's targeting people like myself, who have recently retired. I've been a homeowner in town for 35 years. And, you know, it's time for me to move on, but I still need to keep a residence in West Springfield. So it's a project that I would, I would take advantage of if it existed today. It is a win-win for the town. Once you see what type of things that Sterling Development does, one, from an aesthetic, the work they do is beautiful. You know, the units are more akin to condominium-type living than what you would picture in a four-wall apartment, with common areas, amenities, like washers and dryers. Some of their developments have garages. There's green spaces, dog parks. And again, I'll let Wayne talk about that even more. But again, there's the economic benefit, but I think it brings just an element to West Springfield that does not exist. And I know a lot of people, when we talk multifamily in West Springfield, as a West Springfield resident, we have a vision of what multifamily is, as it exists today. And so, you know, this is something that's going to break that mold. I think it's going to set a new standard, and then hopefully, you know, additional development of this same ilk, you know, follows into the town. But I would be, I would be very happy to answer any questions before I sit down, if there are any. If not, I would, I would yield to Wayne Zuckerman.
Why don't we hear from Wayne, and then we'll open it up to the public if they have any questions?
Sure. Wayne Zuckerman, who is a principal at Sterling Partners.
Good evening. My name is Wayne Zuckerman, Sterling Properties Group, from Livingston, New Jersey. Thank you for your time this evening. I do want to reiterate what Counselor Sipek had said earlier, but when I was introduced to the property, I felt that there was an opportunity, that's something that was missing here in this area of West Springfield. And the idea of upscale housing has always been forefront for Sterling Properties, my company that's based in New Jersey. We are tri-state based. This would be the first opportunity to come into the state of Massachusetts. And again, pre-COVID, our lives, and as well as our building thoughts, were completely different than they were, than they are today. So some of the renderings that you see there, not renderings, are the actual last two projects that we have done in New Jersey. One based in East Rutherford, New Jersey, and the other one based down in Cherry Hill. We found that creating floor plans that will now, since people have decided to work from home, that we're creating floor plans that have the opportunity for one to work as well as live in their apartment. What we used to find as a driver for many of our communities to be near transportation, trains primarily, as a buzzword, well, today that really has gone away. Still doing our due diligence with the, with what's going on here in the Springfield, West Springfield area, but the convenience of having a, an opportunity to have housing at two major interstates, as well as a plethora of conveniences that exists along Route 5. It really is a win-win in terms of dynamics and where the property is positioned for upscale housing. What you see there is just a blend of three-story walk-up, as well as what we've done in a lot of the communities, is a three- or four-story elevator product. And what we'd like to say is age-appropriate, that in an elevator product, we tend to see a, in communities where people have lived in these communities for many years, want to stay there, they know where their park is, they know where their town hall is, they know where the police force is, they want to stay there while perhaps a sibling is in town, but they have the convenience of having elevator service for getting rid of stairs and such. Many of the communities that we have will have a clubhouse. Again, pre-COVID, there was the idea of having social interaction parties, people would rent out, or just gathering spaces, perhaps watching a football game, basketball game. Today, it's a little bit different, but we still feel that the importance of the clubhouse will come back. And as well as what's a big factor today is contemplating delivery service of packages, which 24 months ago was just a package or two. Today, our communities are inundated with package deliveries. So we plan for the future of the way the world is going. If you have any questions, feel free.
Anyone from the public have any questions or comments for our presenters? Yes, please come up to the microphone.
Hello. So, right now, I just-
Can I just have your name for the record?
Yep.
And your address?
Emily Devilla, and I own 114 Highland. So, as it is, you know, there's like apartment complex at the bottom of the hill, and then there's some that are up where Hoyok Mall is. And there's a lot of, like, activity that goes on as it is, that isn't too good. Like, a lot of the people in there are buying drugs in the area as it is. So basically, I think it's wonderful what you guys want to do. My fear is that it ends up not being upscale after a little while, and we get more of those type of people in the area. My house has been broken into already. Just a few days ago, I was in East Springfield. My cameras are going off. There's somebody else trying to get into my house, and it's something that we're dealing with right now. So if it is what they're saying, and it's upscale, and it's going to bring, you know, some good, that's one thing. But if it's going to end up being run down like the other apartment complexes, I don't see how that's going to benefit us. That's all.
Thank you.
Security is always an issue. It's an issue with every developer that I know of. There are concerns. On communities that we've had concerns, we place cameras. We always have our main entrances to every building is a key fob, or some other way to negate somebody that does not belong in the community from entering into each of these buildings. Again, I haven't, I haven't done all the research in terms of where this, where the property is, in terms of the surroundings, but it will be, it's going to be entertained.
Anyone else? Linda?
Linda Parent, 11 Belmont Avenue. I have a couple of questions. One, was a survey done to see that the need would be met by these apartments, and are we going to fill them? Second, have they done an evaluation of what this will do to our public schools? They're already bursting at the seams. We're building a new one now. We want to put an addition on Memorial School. And third, Chestnut Towers was built as upscale housing many years ago.
Someone want to address Linda's questions?
Well, as Wayne said, I think he's in the evaluation process right now. And once, once he, once he finishes that evaluation process and finds out what, if the zone change is approved, what he can fit on the property, he'll have a better idea of what the rent structures are going to be. And I think those rent structures will, will take care of some of those concerns about who might be living in those apartments. One of the things that we, that we looked at, and what Wayne has looked at and Sterling has, is the burden on the school system. These are one- and two-bedroom apartments, not conducive to family living, as Wayne has said to us, that, you know, is often the case, that you might have a young family move in, and once a child is, you know, two, three, four years old, school age, they migrate out into single-family home. So really, the type of, the type of people that are going to be attracted to these young professionals, older people like myself, are really not going to be a burden on the school system. I really, you know, it's hard to address the Chestnut Towers issue. You know, that's a Springfield-centric issue, and we all know what's happened to downtown Springfield. So, again, I can't, you know, it would only be speculation on my part, but that's a question I don't think any of us can answer.
Thank you. Anyone else? Okay. Seeing none, entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
Move to close the public hearing.
Second.
Okay, there's a motion in front of us. Any discussion on the motion to close the public hearing? All right, seeing none, we'll go to a vote. Counselor DiStefano?
Yes.
Counselor Powers?
Yes.
Counselor Smith?
Yes.
Counselor Clune?
Yes.
Counselor Eager?
Yes.
Counselor O'Brien?
Yes.
Counselor Griffin?
Yes.
Counselor Leflam?
Yes.
I vote yes. It's nine in favor, zero opposed. Okay, we're going to open it up for, at this point, for public comment. Anyone wish to address the council on any issues, not before us in the public hearing format that we just went through? Anyone? Nope. Okay. Thank you. All right, we will go to the approval of the minutes. First, we have up in front of us the minutes from December 20th, 2021. Do I hear a motion to approve? All right, I'll move the minutes of December 20th, 2021. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Okay, moved in seconded. Discussion, I do want to note, I want to amend the minutes to, if you go to the motions under appropriations, absent information was the folks who moved and seconded the appropriation for the fire purchase, the fire truck, and the vote. So the minute should be amended to add, Counselor Beck made a motion to approve the purchase of the- purchase of the fire truck, seconded by Counselor Kelly. Motion passes eight in favor, zero opposed, unanimous. Do I hear a second to amend the minutes to accept that information?
Second.
Okay, moved and seconded. Any discussion on the amended minutes? Okay, seeing none, go to a vote. Counselor Laflambeau?
Abstain as a new counselor sworn in the third.
Counselor Griffin?
Yes.
Counselor O'Brien?
Yes.
Counselor Eager?
Yes.
Counselor Klun?
Abstain, absent.
Counselor Smith?
Abstain, new counselor as of January 3rd.
Counselor Powers?
Yes.
Counselor DiStefano?
Yes.
I vote yes. Thank you. Now we'll go to the main amended motions, so we'll go through it again. Counselor DiStefano?
Yes.
Counselor Powers?
Yes.
Counselor Smith?
Yes.
Counselor Klun?
Yes.
Counselor Eager?
Yes.
Counselor O'Brien?
Yes.
Counselor Griffin?
Yes.
Counselor Laflambeau?
Yes.
Counselor Sullivan votes yes. It's unanimous. Thank you for that. Now we'll go to the minutes of January 3rd, 2022. entertain a motion from anyone? Wants to get their name in the minutes?
I'll move, move to approve the minutes from January 3rd.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Okay. Motion in front of us, any discussion? Seeing none, Counselor Laflambeau?
Yes.
Counselor Griffin?
Yes.
Counselor O'Brien?
I wasn't there, so can I vote on it?
Yeah.
Can if you want.
Yes.
Counselor Eager?
Yes.
Counselor Klun?
Yes.
Counselor Smith?
Yes.
Counselor Powers?
Yes.
Counselor DiStefano?
Yes.
Counselor Sullivan, yes. It's unanimous. Thank you. Okay, moving down the agenda, we'll go to subcommittee, any subcommittee chairs wish to report anything to the council or the public at large? Counselor Powers?
Yeah, so, and the young woman left. So on the ordinance and policy subcommittee, tonight, we actually discussed the Whitney Ave project. The concerns about schools were previously asked. I know the petitioners have since left, but for those of the public, you know, that couldn't make that subcommittee meeting, as a reminder, this is only for a zone change. Should we do, should we approve of the zone change, the petitioners still need to go back in front of the planning board for a special permit. At that point in time, from what we understand, the plans will be more finalized. However, as it relates to questions that we asked, security was one of them. Key fobs are required to enter the buildings and rooms. They don't practice gated communities. That is something we asked about, what the planning board decides to do with those other apartment complexes, should it even get to that point, is a different matter. I did encourage the fact that they have some sort of a UPS or FedEx Dropbox, and I'm only giving myself that plug because they're not here, but I'm happy that it did make it into the part of his presentation. Something that they also told us that they do encourage is dog parks or places for your dogs, fire pits and outdoor areas. You know, our goal is to, you know, for as much as possible, make them adhere to, you know, what they've presented, and those were along the lines of the questions that we asked tonight. So that was a concern that we did, concerns, multiple concerns that we did raise. You know, for those of you that couldn't make the subcommittee meeting, we did actually extend that until February 7th. We meet at 5:30, just in case you'd like to come to that. You can also reach out to me if you do have questions or concerns over the following week and a half. And I believe that's all.
Okay, thank you. Any other chairs? Like to address the council, the public? Okay. Move down, I noticed we don't have a student rep here. Any other updates from the, any counselors that wish to, they wish to speak to? Okay, seeing none, we'll, yes.
Was that, I'm sorry, was that the petitions remonstrant of this piece?
Yeah.
So, yeah, one thing, I'm looking for it, I can't find it, but the Colleen recognition dinner that was set for the 28th, 29th, 29th of January at the Carriage House has been postponed. I can't find that, I can't find that new time. I thought I wrote it down. For those planning on attending the Colleen recognition dinner from the, on the 29th at the Carriage House, that has been postponed. I'll get back to you with updates.
Okay, thank you, Counselor. Anyone else? Okay, seeing none. In front of us, or soon to be in front of us this evening, we've asked the town's new development and grants coordinator to come up, maybe speak a few words, present himself and let us know what his focus will be.
Thank you, Mr. President. My name is Gary Shepherd, Counselors, and it's my pleasure to be here tonight before you. We know the last two years have been very difficult with COVID. And there's not a sector of our society that has not been impacted, young and old, business, human services, et cetera. The American Rescue Plan grant was passed by Congress and signed by the president and has provided us with some resources and money to address some of the problems. And many community needs can be addressed, some that were developed due to the COVID and some that were exacerbated by the pandemic. But it also can become transformational in many ways. If used wisely, this money can assist what I think is, should be a priority, and that's business retention and expansion. It is looking at how we can use that money properly for our capital programs, how we can use it for housing and development and community and business redevelopment. After all, you do have a redevelopment authority and this could be a good time to reactivate it and put it to use. And also assistance for nonprofits, seniors in our old neighborhoods. It is my goal to work with you, the council, the mayor and his administration, in all sectors of this economy, on how we can use this money wisely, effectively, and be responsive and sensitive to the needs of our community. In addition to that, I hope that we will be able to leverage this money to get other resources within this community to help our businesses that are here. After all, we believe that in New England, at least 90 to 95% of businesses will stay here and are here. And so business retention and business expansion is very important. So perhaps we can leverage other money, we can make investments, and we can create a new future by reimagining West Springfield. So with that, I look forward to working with you. I plan on calling each of you to meet with you, to sit down, to listen to you and ask for your comments and your ideas and your input. And hopefully, we can take what's been a sad song and make it better and make West Springfield a brighter community for the future.
Thank you. Any questions for Mr. Shepherd while he's in front of us? All right. Thank you. Appreciate it.
Good evening. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Shepherd. Okay, from my chair, I just want to make a quick presentation. I know over the last couple of years, it was, Mr. Shepherd said it was trying in many areas and this council went through a lot. And we went from in-person to Zoom to technology changes to getting bombed one night on the Zooms and went through a lot. And it was, it was a trying, it was a trying time for the council as a whole. And I want to thank our previous leader, Brian Griffin, as our president. He did a fabulous job leading us through a couple of years that were, as I mentioned, extremely difficult. So what we'd like to do is ask Counselor Griffin to come up, have a little presentation for you, and thank you for your leadership over the last two years. All right, thank you. Okay, new business. We'll go back to, right back, Counselor Griffin, under the utility petition, if you're, if you're ready?
I will be.
Would have been nice to have more people in the audience. Applause would have been louder.
Move to approve the utility petition submitted by EverSource Gas relative to the main replacement in the vicinity of Johnson Street and Wilder Terrace.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Okay, is motion first, moved and seconded. Counselor Griffin, do you have anything to add as the chair?
Yes. The committee met this evening, voted two in favor, zero opposed to this, to this petition. Couple of things to note, and I think a great question was asked. I asked that same question to the gas company. So the, the work will start to commence now, whereas they're going to utilize the, or work within the street and replace the, the gas mains in the street. It happened on Nelson Street as well, so this is how I know so much about it. But the work to the individual homes will not commence until the spring. So, you know, for instance, the heat, the heat that people, you know, losing heat for a day might cost people money. So the work to the individual homes will be coordinated with the homeowner and then that work will commence in the spring. So it's a very good question. And this is part of an improvement program, whereas we want this infrastructure completed before we plan to pave our streets. We've gotten into a rut in prior years where we've paved streets and we didn't replace the infrastructure and then we had to tear up the streets and repave. So this is part of that improvement program. Hopefully, I've answered the questions and concerns of the, of the public as well. And unanimously affirmed by the committee. And then DPW approved this, Connor Knightley was with us earlier to explain this as well. So all in all, it meets the subject of our approval.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions, comments from counselors? Seeing none, we're ready to vote? Motion in front of us? Counselor DiStefano?
Yes.
Counselor Powers?
Yes.
Counselor Smith?
Yes.
Counselor Klun?
Yes.
Counselor Eager?
Yes.
Counselor O'Brien?
Yes.
Counselor Griffin?
Yes.
Counselor Laflambeau?
Yes.
I vote yes. It's unanimous. Thank you very much. Counselor, Vice President Klun, you have something for us?
I do. Move to approve the appointment of Mustafa Thompson to the Building and Other Facilities Planning and Construction Committee for a term to begin on January 19th, 2022 and end on January 18th, 2025.
Second.
Okay, moved and seconded for the discussion?
The committee voted three in favor, zero opposed to appoint Ms. Thompson.
Okay, any other comments, discussion? Okay, seeing none, go to a vote. Counselor Laflambeau?
Yes.
Counselor Griffin?
Yes.
Counselor O'Brien?
Yes.
Counselor Eager?
Yes.
Counselor Klun?
Yes.
Counselor Smith?
Yes.
Counselor Powers?
Yes.
Counselor DiStefano?
Yes.
Counselor Sullivan votes yes. Counselor, Vice President Klun?
Move to approve the reappointment of Jean Carol Braca to the Commission on Disabilities for a term to begin on January 19th, 2022 and end on January 18th, 2025.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Moved and seconded. Any additional discussion? Counselor Klun?
Committee voted three in favor, zero opposed for the reappointment.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else? Okay, seeing none, go to a vote. Counselor DiStefano?
Yes.
Counselor Powers?
Yes.
Counselor Smith?
Yes.
Counselor Klun?
Yes.
Counselor Eager?
Yes.
Counselor O'Brien?
Yes.
Counselor Griffin?
Yes.
Counselor Laflambeau?
Yes.
I vote yes. Thank you. It's unanimous. Vice President Klun?
Move to approve the reappointment of Gail Carrington to the Commission on Disabilities for a term to begin on January 19th, 2022 and end on January 18th, 2025.
Moved and seconded. Counselor Klun, the vote?
Again, the vote was three, zero to approve.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else? Okay, seeing none, we'll go to a vote. Counselor Laflambeau?
Yes.
Counselor Griffin?
Yes.
Counselor O'Brien?
Yes.
Counselor Eager?
Yes.
Counselor Klun?
Yes.
Counselor Smith?
Yes.
Counselor Powers?
Yes.
Counselor DiStefano?
Yes.
Counselor Sullivan votes yes. Vice President Klun, you have anyone else for us?
One more. Move to approve the reappointment of Paul Morai to the Commission on Disabilities for a term to begin January 19th, 2022 and end on January 18th, 2025.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Moved and seconded. Counselor Klun?
Again, three, zero to reappoint.
Anyone else? Okay, seeing none, we'll go to a vote. Counselor DiStefano?
Yes.
Counselor Powers?
Yes.
Counselor Smith?
Yes.
Counselor Klun?
Yes.
Counselor Eager?[1737.75]